I call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Florinoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight, council? Not, we'll move on with the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the September 13th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of September 2nd, 2021 special payroll in the amount of $2,0574.25. Approval of September 17th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $159,435.45. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Acceptance of the Economic Development Committee minutes. Consent of park use permit for the First Baptist Church, that's a noise exemption. Resolution approving employment in the Park and Recreation Department. Total claims in the amount of $352,903.03. We had one claim above $75,000 to Alex Air Apparatus for $127,898.20. I'll take a motion to approve that.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Florinoy, second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move to public forum and appearances and our first presentation will be from Sierra Club.
Thank you, Mayor Boyer and city council members. I just wanted to report to you on the Forum for the Future of Fairfield and how that went. It was about two and a half weeks ago. Oh, yuck, thank you. And first of all, I want to thank Connie for opening the forum. We really appreciate it. And we also want to thank the city council for your support. The city, of course, was a co-sponsor of the Forum for the Future of Fairfield. I also want to thank our four different co-EMCs that came from Fairfield High School and from the Maharishi School, some of whom are here today. I think that added touch really made the difference in the forum, bringing those young voices to the future of Fairfield. So thanks to all of you. We had, in attendance, 210 people signed in. It was a hybrid event, so that was via Zoom or in person. And those are just people we accounted for. Some people didn't sign in. So we feel like we had very good attendance. We are quite pleased with the numbers. For those of you from the city council who attended, I think there were at least four of you. Thank you so much for being there and for your support. And for those who weren't able to attend, I think we sent all of you the video of the forum, so you have that as a resource. So I hope you'll take advantage of that. There was a lot of good information generated. We've gotten nothing but positive feedback. We also were able to secure additional funding for the Sustainability Coordinator. So we received after the forum an anonymous gift of $5,000 to put towards the Sustainability Coordinator position. And I should say that our goal was $45,000. We're at $46,000 right now, but we're going to have to raise some additional funds for overhead costs and program funding, so that they have something, some money to start to work with. We should be back to you, we hope, within a month when we're ready to advertise the position. So we'll be coordinating together with you on that. Also, as a result of the forum, at the end of the forum, we asked people out in the hallway to sign up for our four different thematic areas as volunteers to help us implement our plans. So we have a whole new cadre of volunteers in our four thematic areas. And I just want to remind you that our Sierra Club strategic plan has overlaps, actually, with the comprehensive plan for the city of Fairfield. There happen to be 22 policies and activities in which we, that we have in common. And so this group of volunteers will help us start implementing not only our plan, but also parts of your plan as well, your comprehensive plan, Fairfield Forever Plan. And I think I covered all the key points. So again, just wanted to thank you for your support. And some of the students who were attending the forum from two weeks ago, all the students at the Maharishi High School and some students from the Fairfield High School decided to go back into the classroom and use the information that they learned from the forum itself and start to do their own thinking about what a resilient community might look like. And so first of all, I'm going to introduce Tess Patton. She's from Fairfield High School and she's going to talk a little bit about the newest initiative at the Fairfield High School.
Hello, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the student body of Fairfield High School. My name is Tess Payton. I'm a senior at the school. And I believe that as co-president of the Students for Change Club, I want to work towards building and making a better ecosystem and resiliency in our community. Our Students for Change Club mission is to better our school district by taking positive and meaningful actions on topics such as environmental issues, sustainability, and social awareness. This year, my co-president and I, Getika Adikari, decided to implement TerraCycle into our school districts, starting with the high school. TerraCycle is a recycling organization that specializes in non-recyclable items, which we get sent to companies who can turn them into new products. Today, there are TerraCycle collection sites in various locations in Fairfield, the most popular being everybody's. The Fairfield High School Students for Change Club will establish additional collection bins within the high school for students to dispose of unwanted items such as oral care, chip bags, grocery bags, and other plastics that aren't typically recyclable. This could significantly cut down on items entering the landfills where they could be put to good use through recycling. We plan to initiate this in the high school in the next few months, and we will use January, February, and March as a pilot run before expanding the project out to other schools in Fairfield. I wanted to let you know because this is a big part of our community, and I want to show that the school district and Fairfield High School specifically is interested in bettering our environment and our ecosystem. Thank you.
And now the students from Maharishi School have put together a collaborative presentation, and this represents all the grades of the high school. So, Sheta, you want to start?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tess, for starting out with the FHS. I'd love to continue with Maharishi School. This is our city council presentation. If you could move to the next slide, please. Thank you. This is the team that helped create this slide. Dave Rishi, Janaya, Eva, Jayanta, myself, and Uma. So we'll be starting with the introduction about what Maharishi School is and what we need concentrate on. We'll also be talking about recycling, proper recycling, and also just mentioning TerraCycle. Solar power, describing the topic of the section, so mainly just going over solar power and how we have implemented it into our school. We will also be talking about the greenhouse and benefits of having a greenhouse, and as our thoughts on community ideas and just what we could do as a community. So Maharishi School. Our mission is to create an innovative, consciousness-based educational environment where students can think deeply and become creative, compassionate, and contributing citizens of the world. Our goals. How is Maharishi School planning to contribute to the Fairfield, a future of Fairfield? So I'd like to hand off the next slides to Eva and Uma, who'll be talking about recycling.
So our school currently does not have any TerraCycle bins, and we are planning, though, to add TerraCycle bins around the school and around the campus in the future. We can insert more TerraCycle bins around town. I know that everybody's has one, and then Fairfield High School is planning on putting one onto their campus.
Yeah.
Sorry. Tess already went over this, but just a little recap. TerraCycle recycles plastic items, including bags, bottles, snack bags, et cetera. And they also recycle clothing, like fabrics. They recycle self-care products and electronics as well, so it's more specific things that cannot be recycled. And now we have Jayanta talking about solar energy.
So I go down. All right. I just want to start off by saying thank you to the city council for all that you do to keep our city healthy and safe. We all appreciate it a lot. So jumping right in, for, in our school, we currently have one solar unit that we get energy from. But the students involved at the climate club within the school are encouraging the faculty to expand our green energy usage. So we have plans to expand in the future. And then the Marshy University has a large solar field array outside of campus that they get most of their energy from. So I feel that our community as a whole is taking a good start to a full switch from non-renewable energy to renew, uh, green renewable energy. And then I think, yeah, so our question as a whole to the city council is, does the city have any plans for expanding green energy usage in the future? I think Ishida is going to talk about our greenhouse next.
So we have a greenhouse at our school, and we mainly use it for fresh fruits and veggies because we love making things at our school kitchen. So all our school students, like lower school, we get an option to have, like, making pizza from fresh food from our greenhouse. The greenhouse also helps protect harsh weather and reduces the use of pesticides. It protects the plants from outer animals, so we don't have to use pesticides and termites. Also, it provides a longer growth season for the plants because it also has controlled climate, and it also expands our plant options. So we feel that having a greenhouse for our city would be a wonderful addition. Next, I'll hand it off to Dave Rishi to talk about some transportation ideas we had about our community.
Thank you. Transportation, sorry. Transportation, the, how, why transportation is key in Iowa? The transportation system forms the backbone of the state's economy. The whole system enables residents and visitors to travel to work or school. In Fairfield, it's a very small town, so it lacks some, like, buses, trams, and all that stuff. And how can this, how can transportation be improved in Fairfield? Fairfield should implement a transportation system to ensure the safety of others and to students. This includes all the tourists who come in from all over to visit Iowa and Fairfield. Sorry. To achieve this, oh, okay. To achieve a flawless transportation system, you'd have to create one that is fast and dependable. This would be implementing safer lights, because in some parts of town, it can get very dark at some times, or the light isn't as bright. The advantage is for Fairfield. With this system, motorists, businesses, and tourists can be safe. We can start this process by expanding our public transport with electric bikes to decrease the town's carbon footprints. This would also include adding solar panels, solar panels, solar-powered, sorry, solar-powered lights. Thank you so much. Next to Janaya.
So one big issue we have is food insecurity. So we have, like, a list of things we can do to stop the food insecurity. Now, our number one point is we can increase food pantries in more locations. We can do more food donation to schools, set up a community fridge, and as well as obtain leftover food from supermarkets for redistribution, as well as volunteer to help bag food. One thing I believe is that no one should ever have to live with their hunger. And now we passing it off back to Ishida.
Okay. We feel that one thing the community can do right now is definitely use reusable bags instead of disposable bags in stores such as Walmart and Hy-Vee. Everybody's is on top of things already. They're giving an option for reusable bags and paper bags. I feel that Walmart and other companies should also bring out that. So for this, we'll definitely need to educate the people, especially young adults, because I feel that they'll, they'll be the people going through this climate change, so they should be on the front lines of helping out with climate change. For this, we could hold conferences, something like the forum, but mainly focused on younger kids, maybe from high school or even middle school. And to attract their attention, we could also have petitions and rallies, and we could ask them to sign for, like, Walmart or Hy-Vee changing for to paper bags or just reusable bags. And we could also have special lessons in school. Maybe the teachers could talk about climate change. And one more thing we came up as a group was building tornado and flash flood shelters for people who don't have a basement to go to or just have problems like that. Five actions we should take in the near future, or maybe not right now, but in the future, would be to actually implement compost and recycle programs, even in restaurants and just shops in general. We should also raise more money for solar panels in our city. Our school and university already have some solar panel units and have some wind energy. I feel that we could expand this to our entire community. We should also install more food pantries in town, as Janaya was talking about. We should also increase the lighting on dark roads, because I do notice whenever I go home from school, there's this dark road I have to go, and it's kind of scary, especially when winter rolls around. I really have to turn on my flashlight if I need to walk or something, so I just feel like more lighting on the roads would be very useful. Also, a task force to enforce sustainable development within the community would be an awesome idea. This task force should include, I feel, high school students or just college students in our town to promote, like, young, young minds in our group. Please let us know how we can combine our efforts with the citywide initiatives for community-based sustainability. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions to the group?
I was just going to recommend it would be a good idea if you got ahold of one of the manuals of our comprehensive plan. It's available for the community. The other thing, you were mentioning some of the emergency things like tornado and flash floods. That would be an awareness of that we have a whole emergency plan for the whole city. And those are places you could begin to tap into and see what's already here and what's in place already. And then just knowing some of the expenses of what it takes to maintain that. Okay? But good, lots of ideas. Thanks.
I would just ask that they would email the city administrator with the street names and the addresses that aren't very well-lit, and we'll take a look at it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. So I'm sure we'll be working together in the future. Okay, so the next, we have Justin Pilkington to talk about city charges and fees. Mr. Justin, are you here?
All right, I'll just go ahead and jump into this. I had the city replace a stop box in my, in one of my front yards, and I wasn't expecting a bill to be $1,600. I had gotten an estimate about a year ago, and they said it was going to be $650, and they, they were seeming like they didn't want to do it. So they said, go ahead and let the city do it. It shouldn't be much more. So a year later, that's when the city came and did it, and then I got a bill for $1,600. I was expecting the city to be a little bit more, but not more than double. So I was thinking maybe $750, $850. When I came in to complain, I actually started looking at all the charges. Some of the stuff isn't a big deal. I think some of the, like, materials used were a little high, but again, those are going to be little from when I get into, like, for example, the hydrovac that was used. They were charging $150 an hour, and they charged for four hours for that. Just that alone came up to $600. So that brought me to your guys' resolution establishment, where you guys were charging and put that stuff in there for hourly. Going over it, I think maybe even the hourly stuff could be on par of doing that. The problem is, is that you guys are charging hourly for each piece of equipment for the whole time of the job. And also, the hydrovac is an equipment that probably even shouldn't be used for a job this small. And I actually asked the people living there, they said they didn't see a hydrovac even there. I also asked the people, I got three bids from here in Fairfield last week. One came in at $650 and two came out at $700. So those are current bids for, that's up to date. And they said they don't use a hydrovac. The pipe, a hydrovac after it's been excavated, you're still, you're uncovering about two to three feet of pipe. And what the excav, the hydrovac does is it pretty much, like, power washes it, so you can, don't hit it or damage anything. And then you have a, like, a sub-pump that kind of pumps it out into the truck. That by itself, if it was used, would only take, like, 10 to 20 minutes, tops 30 minutes. And the problem is, is that that's $150 an hour, and it really throws it up to, like, for this job, it went up to $600 for that small amount of use. To even amplify this, let's say this job took eight hours to do, just the hydrovac alone would jump up to $1,200, even though it's not even being used. So that's the main points that I wanted to hit on. I mean, I could hit on some of these other things, but really, it came down to that hydrovac and then charging everything per hour for the whole amount of time. For example, you guys have the excavator on here. You guys charge for the whole four hours. But again, that's one of the things that I'm not really worried about, because you guys have that more reasonable price. So my issue is I, I wasn't expecting it to be more than double than local bids of excavators.
I see we have Steve here. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Talk about, from your side, what, what?
I swung down by there when they was working on that. They had the hydroexcavator there, and the reason we use that is because if there's gas lines or anything in the way, you don't take a risk of hitting the gas line and tearing it up. So they used the hydroexcavator quite a bit. The other thing was, once they got down there, the service line was leaking. So the whole time while it was working, it was sucking the water out of that hole so they could stay dry. So it was running the whole time. And when I left, I don't know how many hours it was down there. I know it was all morning when I left, and then it was still working on it. And of course, the valve was damaged. Somebody tried to repair it, and they used a piece of rubber with two hose clamps. That don't work. Yeah, that's it. You know, under that kind of pressure, it just don't work. So they had to cut all that out and put all new in. So there's a couple of couplings, the valve, the riser, a little bit of copper. So that was the whole job.
So it sounds like you had a lot more detail.
Gets into a little more times than what you think it's going to be.
And if one of the contractors would have gone in there, they would have found out a lot more of this, too.
It could have went up in price.
Yeah.
Because you don't always know what you're going to find until you get down there and start in.
I just want to add, I had a one-man crew replace my water line, because my box was leaking, two years ago, $1,500. So if someone could have done it for half that, would have been nice, but, and this guy was, from what everyone told me, a good price. So I don't know where $650 or $750, I've never heard that low for something like this.
I think that's an introductory price.
Any comments?
He was also notified almost a year prior to us coming to do it, to get that this needed to be done. So the city waited as, about as long as we possibly could to do that, to give him the opportunity to have somebody else do it. And these fees are also the fees that the council voted on last spring to do this. So he was being charged per the, per what the council had voted on.
Generally, you know, through the wintertime, we're a little lenient on that, because it's hard to get a contractor that wants to get down there and get wet in the middle of winter. Too bad. So we give them a little grace period. As long as you've got somebody lined up for spring, you know, to get it done, fine. When it goes over a year, we get the list, and then we start going around fixing them.
Yeah. And Justin, just so you know, it's, it's not, it's not our intent to gouge people or make a big profit. We're just trying to get the job done and do it right, and, go ahead, Erin.
We do, we would incentivize them to use a private contractor rather than us do it, because we have plenty of things to do also. So there is a reason why our fees are higher.
Okay. Any?
I was going to say, just to be clear, too, if a job takes four hours, we don't charge them hourly rate on every piece of equipment there for the full four hours, right?
It's, they're running, yes.
If they're running, but if they're not being used, we're not charging.
Yeah.
Correct.
Like I said, $75 a man-hour.
Okay. Any additional questions, council, or any action? Okay. If not, let's move on. Okay. Next is Teri Baker. Visit Fairfield's annual report.
Good evening, council. First, I want to thank you all for your patience in receiving this report. Usually, I like to get this to you by the end of August, but August saw me out of state for a family, for a death in the family, and everything's been pushed a little bit behind, but we are here. We have great things to report to you, and I'm excited to share with you what we've been doing in the last year. You'll notice on your annual report, I've given you just a summary of what's happened in the last year, how we started to sort of reset, rethink, refocus on how we were going to incentivize tourism, how that was going to benefit and help the city. And a lot of the things we did were to focus on local businesses. We know that if, as tourism starts to, to gain some momentum, visitors need a place to go to eat, they need some shops to go to, they need some attractions to go to. So we wanted to really support those local, small businesses that are really the backbone of the tourism industry. And at the same time, they're the backbone of what makes this community livable. If we don't have great shops in our downtown, if we don't have some great restaurants to go to, we don't really want to live here, and we find ourselves going out of town to take care of all those needs and amenities. So we wanted to also build that recognition of Fairfield as a destination. We spent a lot of time creating evergreen content, which is content that lives for a very long time, rather than something like, here's a current event, here's, this event is happening, or this is going to happen, and after a month, it's over with. We wanted to have something that would have some longevity. And we also wanted to create a local awareness about the benefits of tourism. And as most of you know, the large part of our activity centers around marketing. We've developed a new communication plan, new marketing plan, which I think most of you have seen, as well as a new strategic plan. Our overall objectives were to inspire and increase leisure tourism, to enhance the desire to live, learn, and work in Fairfield, as well as move or start a new business, to build local pride in the community, and to improve the overall desirability of the community through storytelling. So I've listed some of our marketing initiatives. We had an influencer program where we brought an Instagram influencer in town who had something like 20,000 followers on Instagram, and she has been creating lots of content for us and sharing that with her market that is largely throughout the Midwest. We also work closely with the state tourism office, putting ads in our guides, in their guides. Also, we pretty much follow along with their plan for marketing, which they not only want to increase tourism, but they also want to increase livability, they want to increase that, that draw for workplace and talent. So we aligned a lot of our marketing messages along that same line. I'm not going to go through all of these, but just hit some highlights. One of my favorites is our community blogger program. We've basically added 25 blogs to our website since May, which is giving that sort of local perspective of what local people are saying about Fairfield, which makes it really cool. And another big campaign that we did was Find Yourself in Fairfield. This we targeted out of state, and we had some tremendous response to this. We're going to be building on this in the future, as we do Find Yourself in Fairfield 2.0, and building on some different new markets and some niche markets. We also held a community marketing think tank, which was a really great time to bring community leaders and business leaders together to talk about how they see Fairfield and how they want Fairfield to be represented. This tied into our initiative to also attract that workforce as well as that tourism. So we, we got some great pointers from them. And you'll see on the third page here, the, some of our marketing results. We had a 40% increase in our social media following, a 20% increase in Shop &amp; Be Merry sales over last year, the previous year. And we had some really staggering results from some of our shopping ads. I think one of our, one of my favorite things is that our print ads, what we put into Midwest Living and some other magazines, we received 933 leads from 32 states requesting information about visiting Fairfield. So these are people that we can continue to retarget. So these are people that we can continue to retarget and remarket to, um, so that we can attract them into the area. Moving into our financial overview, uh, you can see that last year, we cut our budget by 32% in order to accommodate that unpredictable, uh, travel climate. Uh, there was a decrease of 44% in the hotel motel tax, which obviously was kind of startling and we expected, um, but we had to do some fancy footwork so that we could make, um, make this work. We ended up with 82% of our operating budget came from that hotel motel tax and the rest was fulfilled with, uh, reserves and grants that we received. But the thing that I'm most happy about is that we made a very concerted effort to reduce how we were spending our money in other areas so that we could actually increase the money we were spending in marketing. And we actually spent 30% more for marketing this year than we have, uh, in previous years. On the back, you'll see that we had some community support projects. Again, we really focused on how do we support our local businesses? How do we support our communities? That is not sort of a, um, sort of cheap reinforcement of my greatness here on this page, but simply it was a, a screenshot, uh, from Instagram that Clint Stevenson put out after we did our restaurant week. He was just so appreciative that we had made, um, made a big difference for their business. And he posted that, I wish he had put, "Visit Fairfield," but we'll take it. Um, we also had many shops who said to us during our virtual shopping events that they were able to pay their entire month's rent off of one night of doing virtual shopping. And that really made a big difference for them to keep their doors open. We also did, last year, we had our Shop and Be Merry event, but we also did with that a Fairfield Gift Guide, which was a virtual magazine that people could download and look at and look at the gifts that were being offered in our stores. Uh, we did some e-commerce training as well as some Facebook marketing training for our local entrepreneurs. Restaurant Week was a huge success. We did the big takeout at the end of February, which I don't know why we did that with the snowstorm and everything. However, uh, usually typically restaurants are very low in, uh, their clientele in, in late January. So we wanted to make sure that they could keep their doors open and some other various things that we did. Um, one of the things I did add in here for you are some trends that are happening with tourism. Right now, the latest research from the state is that tourism in Iowa is trending about on par with 2019, which I think is really great news. Now, things can always change. Our traveler right now is very fickle. People are choosing to change their travel plans if they feel they need to. However, we also find that they're, they're tending to take fewer trips, but taking longer trips, and they prefer going to rural areas, which all of those things play into our favor. I think one of the things that I found a little disturbing with the trends, uh, was that most travelers, and I believe the number was like 69% of travelers who were surveyed, this is a national survey, most travelers were actually expecting to receive better service than they received before the pandemic. I found that very, a little bit disturbing, uh, simply because the service industry and hospitality industry was, has been so hit from the workforce issue. And many of them are still not recovered on that. So they, they were having a very challenging time finding people to work in their businesses. And so providing that level of customer service has also been a challenge. So I, I find it very interesting that people are expecting that. So my big PSA right now is be nice to these people. So they, they really need your support. Uh, as we move into next year, uh, we're gonna be expanding our marketing to reach, um, a meeting market, a wedding market, and a group tour market. In fact, our group tour marketing starts this fall. Uh, we'll be continuing to message people and finding that ideal customer, bringing them to our top of our funnel and trickling them down so we can actually get that visit. We're doing lots of video storytelling, creating a stronger SEO on our website, which we consider our website to be one of the main assets for Fairfield, because we try to keep that as up to date with events and so on. And one of the things that we will be introducing, in fact, you all get a sneak preview tonight. You have a little QR code on your table. If you take your camera phone, your phone camera, and you simply hover it over that QR code, it will bring up the ePlay Win Passport that has actually gone live today. You were the first ones to get to download it. You simply sign in, you can, you sign in with your name and email. Um, you sign in, you will be given a link to load the passport onto your phone. Now, why would you want to do that? The big reason you want to do that is because we have over 30 businesses who are registered on this passport. Some of those businesses are offering all kinds of discounts and specials, but more importantly, every business that you go to, you can do what's called a check-in. There will be a four-digit code that you simply enter into the phone with that check-in. Every time you check in, you are entered into a drawing for prizes. Now, we're not talking about, you know, like a T-shirt or anything like that. We're talking about in October, uh, the prize is going to be Bose headsets. Uh, we also have Yeti coolers that are going to be some of the prizes. So we have all kinds of like fun things. Every month, that will reset. So every month you can go and the more places you go, the more entries you get and the more chances you have of winning. The whole idea behind this is not only to support our local businesses, but to give visitors an easy access to what's happening in Fairfield, and also to give locals that access. Because I have heard numerous times from locals who have been here for many years going, "I didn't know that business was there. I didn't know that restaurant was there." So we're trying to just expand that awareness and keep people moving around and spending their money locally. One of the other things I'm gonna give you a little sneak peek at, because it is on the verge of being printed, is our new vibe guide. And you'll see that up on the screen. This has been, uh, a work in progress for the last couple of months. You can go ahead and scroll. You'll see that we're using our, our tagline as much as possible to get that idea of the vibe of Fairfield out there, using visuals and stories. But as we scroll down, you see we have a feature article. I wanted this to look like a travel magazine. So it's not just your, here's a list of businesses. This is gonna have stories and content that should be engaging and interesting for people. And these guides will be sent out all across, um, Iowa, as well as to people who request information about Fairfield. We also have a thing in here about a special on the Carnegie Museum and kind of why that is significant to our community and why people should care that it's here and why they should want to visit. We also have a feature on the art in the community. And of course, our entertainment. And our food. So we're playing on that whole idea of the world of food that you can find here in the community. And then we're doing a whole feature on cider, um, as well as wine and dine. So really, we're looking at Fairfield as becoming that little micro hub of that little sort of food and wine and beverage kind of destination and building upon that and telling the stories of some of our businesses here. Then we go into the trails, get some information there. Then we have a feature on what it's like to live here. So we've, we've got some locals who've been interviewed. Again, this ties back into our work with the tourism office, with, um, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, as well as conversations we have with FIDA about what do we need to continue to attract workforce and attract people to live here? Then it's our must-do activities. Shops and how to plan your trip, wherever you're living, how this is how long it takes to get here. And then, of course, we still have our listing of our appropriate hospitality businesses. Great, I think that's good, Jason. Thank you. You'll also notice at the bottom here, where our little QR codes, you might've seen these around town as window clings, we have these QR codes that if you take your, uh, phone camera and you just hover it over, it will load directly to our website. So you can see the events that are happening in town, the restaurants, as well as the shops. So we're, again, trying to keep that information easily accessible. So, do I have any questions? Anything else you're curious about?
I have a couple of questions, Terry.
Yes.
So some of these, uh, virtual and online things that you did last year that were really successful, do you plan to redo those?
We're looking into it. Right now, the shops are not that interested because people are starting to move around more. So that's kind of a lot on their plate. Um, but last year, for example, in Shop and Be Merry, we did a hybrid event. We had it both in person and the virtual. So we're looking at possibly doing that this year.
Okay, great. Uh, I forgot what my other question was.
And the virtual shopping was so awesome because literally shops were getting people from Pennsylvania, from Minnesota, that were watching them on Facebook and ordering things. So it, it was really successful.
You said, um, the hotel motel tax was down quite a bit.
Last year, yes.
Last year. But it's back up, the travel is back up in Iowa and longer trips. Do we have an adequate supply of rooms right now with one of the hotels not being open or do we not?
Um, I, I think we probably are going to need more at some point in the near future. Um, I think being down that other hotel, I, from what I can see, it's not super hurting us because the other two hotels are picking up a lot more and they're full. They're getting more. But I'm looking to see where our leakage is, if we still have any leakage where people are going, oh, there's no room or whatever, and they're going to another community. So we're still trying to see how we can get, gather that information. I, I do think that it would be very, very helpful in our community to have an additional hotel and possibly a boutique hotel in the downtown area that helps service the convention center, so that they could actually become a place to have meetings and conventions.
I did speak to someone who recently graduated from university, said that their family had to stay in a tomahawk in, I think it was 19, maybe, maybe it was last year, but. So if it's a big enough event, yes, they, they reach and exceed capacity.
Okay.
Local ones.
Yeah, I think those big events like weddings or reunions or things like that, that's probably where it gets really challenging for people to find all the rooms they need in town. And I should mention also that the, any rise in hotel motel tax can also come from the fact that many of these hotels have raised their prices. So that plays also into the whole factor.
And sometimes we see a rise in hotel motel tax if there's a big road project, because the crews stay there. So when they get to work on South Main, maybe we'll see a bump. I just want to say, I told you this before, I love the, the color scheme of this guide. It's, it's cool, it's retro. And I like what you did with the logo here as well, kind of turning it into like gray tone. It kind of feels fresh again.
We're, we're trying to freshen things up, make it look a little different, but still be the same. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Particularly for really helping those businesses survive this last year. I, I know you had a, a very important part in making that happen and, uh, just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. It was our pleasure.
Okay. So let's move on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. First item is consideration of agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for Fiscal Year 22 Airport Improvement Program for the Hanger Apron Rehabilitation Center. Melanie.
Okay. So, um, this is phase three of replacing the, I call it the driveways into the hangars for, um, the individual airplanes. This project is around 625,000 with 445,000 coming, um, from the federal government. Then this agreement that you have in front of you, um, tonight is for 105,000 of state funds, which leaves, um, 75,000 in local funds that is, um, part of our budget. So we would recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Two Hill, second by Hamm. Any discussion or questions? Not, please call a roll. Two Hill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, next action item, consideration of engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney for amendment of development agreement with Vastu Partners. Erin?
Yeah, this is, um, the starting phase of the, well, I assume it's the last phase for Vastu Partners to, uh, add their LMI portion of the, of the last section of their development. Um, so we're, we're entering into agreement with Allers and Cooney to write that developer's agreement, to, uh, work through a TIFF agreement or a developer's agreement with Martin.
So they're, they're expanding urban district, urban renewal district?
It's already, I think it's already been done, but it's the developer's agreement that needs to be redone for this last section. Because it's, the, the section we did last year was a market rate, uh, development. This is gonna be an LMI development. So it has to be two different ones, two different agreements.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Rasmussen. Any questions? Not, please call a roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next one is, uh, consideration of engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney for amendment of development agreement with Neighborhood Builders and Developers LLC.
Um, this action is more, um, a formal, um, formalization to ratify Erin's actions of, um, signing the develop, or signing the engagement letter with Allers. The next action item is an amendment to the development agreement with Neighborhood Builders. And because it had to do with the land acquisition for Highway One, we wanted to, um, proceed without waiting another two weeks for council. Um, it ended up only taking a couple hours to write the amendment, so it was not a large scope of work.
And this has also to do with the roundabout, right? And that?
Yep. Um, and I, you can go ahead and explain, I guess, your next item. So Neighborhood Builders and Developers, um, they have commercial properties that front Highway One that are needing, um, this, we need to purchase right away, state right away for the roundabout project. But then also with the project, we're extending Libertyville Road on East until it matches up with Court Street. And so that road, Libertyville Road East, uh, will be a city street. And, um, there are two and a half residential lots that are being taken, um, by this road. And, uh, so Neighborhood Builders and Developers proposed that in exchange for us removing a clause out of their development agreement, they would donate those two and a half, um, residential lots. The, what they wanted removed from the development agreement is there was a line in there that if a connecting road was not constructed within five years or something like that, um, the group would be responsible for a cul-de-sac. And obviously, if we're obtaining the parcels, um, our goal is to extend the road, but the group wanted that removed just in case the, you know, if the project would fall through and it doesn't end up happening, the group didn't want, um, you know, to have that cul-de-sac on their shoulders. Um, so that was part of the negotiation, um, myself talking, uh, with members of the group and JCG talking with them and Erin.
Okay, great. Comment?
I mean, installing a cul-de-sac would be, there's no point to it if it's gonna be connected soon.
Correct.
Correct. Makes all sorts of sense. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay. So moved by Hallie, second by Two Hill. This is the first action item. Um, so any other discussion or questions? If not, please call a roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the resolution, uh, consideration to approve and authorize execution of a First Amendment to the Agreement for Private Development Buy-in Between the City of Fairfield and Neighborhood Builders and Developers.
Motion to approve resolution?
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is to have a public hearing on the matter of rezoning 202 South Second Street from, uh, business to residential. And, um, I think I'll just go ahead and open that public hearing now. Um, does someone want to speak to that?
You want me to describe it?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Melanie.
Um, so this came to planning and zoning for, um, the rezoning of 202 South Second from B2 to R3. Uh, the, B1, thank you. Um, if you look at the, exactly, there you go. Uh, so you'll see that the current zoning shows it in B1 with R3, uh, directly adjacent to it. And then also now that we have an up-to-date comprehensive plan, we need to take into consideration the future land use plan when rezoning. So Jason, if you'd scroll down. Um, the future land use plan does not have a one-to-one, um, correlation of land use to existing zones. Um, so what the future land use of this area is considered downtown peripheral. And, um, in the comprehensive plan, it describes that as a mix of residential, single-family residential, multifamily residential. multifamily residential, and commercial. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt that this change was in compliance with our existing zoning map and our future land use plan. So, planning and zoning recommended approval.
Great, thank you. So, McKay? Michael, you want to talk about this?
Good evening and thank you. So, Dawn, my wife and I would like to ask you to approve this request to rezone our property at 202 South Second from B1 to R3 based on the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which met on September 7th. We would also request that you make this the only public reading and not, and to please waive the second and the third reading. Here's why we feel this request is justified. We accepted an offer to buy our house on July 27th contingent on rezoning it from B1 to R3. The sale will not go through unless you approve that rezoning measure. We applied for our petition for rezoning the next day on July 28th and called several of our neighbors by telephone and met with one of our neighbors in person as well. In all, we spoke to four, and they all gave their okay. They all had no problem with the rezoning measure. The next day on July 29th, we sent hand-addressed letters via postal service to 17 of our closest neighbors. This is the letter that we sent out, telling them that we were trying to do this and inviting them to call us if they had any questions or concerns, and we did not hear from any of our neighbors. In addition, all of our neighbors were notified, of course, by the city Planning and Zoning Office via the certified USPS of the September 7th Planning and Zoning Meeting, inviting them to come and ask questions or voice any objections that they might have. No one came to that meeting from those invitations. As you know, September 7th, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved our request. And recently, the zoning office, of course, sent out the additional public notice by US Postal Service to this public meeting. Finally, we would like to ask you to consider the following. Of course, as she just pointed out, 202 South Second is directly on the border and across the alley from R3. Importantly, the change to R3 is consistent with its neighborhood usage, and we and the neighbors we contacted believe it will not have any negative impacts on any neighbors' properties. We mentioned earlier, we cannot sell this property unless you pass this request, so finally, we would mention that delaying this costs us money with every passing day, and for all of these reasons, we ask you to please pass this resolution and also waive the second and the third readings. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Michael. And do we have anybody else from the neighborhood or from the public who wants to speak to this property? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and we will move on to the ordinance, to the consideration of rezoning, again, 202 South Second from B1 to R3. And the request was to suspend the rules and move it to the third and final reading. Much pleasure.
I will make a motion to suspend.
Okay.
And move to third.
Okay, so there's been a move to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Okay. Moved by Hamm. Any discussion?
Need more residences, so I think this is a really good move.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Not, please call a roll. Two Hill?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the next vote will be to move it to the third and final reading.
We need a motion. I'll make a motion to move it to the third.
Move the ordinance and move it.
I'll second his.
Okay. Moved by Flornoy, second by Two Hill. Any other discussion?
Yes, what's the motion again?
Approve the ordinance and move from the first to the third and final reading.
Tonight.
Suspend the second and third reading.
Okay, any other question or comment? Not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Congratulations. Good luck on your sale.
Thank you.
Okay. The next ordinance is a first reading of the consideration of a mobile food truck ordinance.
This was something Economic Development Committee worked on after Mike and Nicky's was mobile, before they found their permanent home in the former Morry Mio location. So, what we looked at was what other cities do. Some just say, no, food vendors on public property, keep it simple. Anytime you invite someone to do something on public property, there's obviously certain risk that the city is inviting, and also, you know, you got to make sure you balance the private need with the public good. So, we discussed what areas of town we felt were appropriate for food truck locations, and the yellow is our final locations, so the inner side of the Central Park parking spaces on all four sides, and then the block of Briggs between Second and Main there by Petro Park.
They like that, I think.
So, some of the basic rules are face towards, or face away from the road with your, where you're offering the food, clean up after yourself, you got to have your state licenses, you got to have your city vendor license before you can do this. Can't offer, you can't be in operation from midnight to 6:00 AM. But other than that, there's no specific days to this permit, so if somebody bought a monthly permit, they could be out there every single day moving around, whatever. So, it opens it up compared to what we did with Mike and Nicky's. I think we gave them like a day of the week. So, again, it's not a big fee. I think it's $5 a day, $20 a month. I was in retail.
$5 a week?
$5 a week, say, $5 a week. I was in retail, that's cheap rent, you know, for what you're, for when you're in business. And there's an update coming, our Central Park Tables Project, so it's good timing to have something on the books. Again, the benefit of having a permit is just if somebody were to do this and leave a lot of trash, make a lot of noise, whatever, the permit can be pulled. So, it gives the city a little bit of authority. So, that's basically it. We're ready to move this from the first to the second. I don't think we need to rush this in this particular ordinance. We don't have a lot of food trucks asking to be on public property. Just to point out, if they stay on private property, they don't need this permit. They do need a vendor, a vendor, or this, yeah, they need a vendor license, they need all their state licenses, but they don't need this. And if they're in a park, they go to the park department, not the city. And if they're part of a larger event that the council has sanctioned, they don't need this either. So, if they're selling food at First Friday, they don't need this permit. They're part of that event as long as they're operating during that event's time. So, we try to make it kind of more relaxed, not too prohibitive, but if somebody just wants to be downtown selling food on public property, they can go in these locations anytime except for midnight to 6:00, anytime of year they want.
I have a question. Did you guys consider, you know, like, a time when RagBri comes through, how that would then compare? Or would these be people that would already have the permits year-round and wouldn't even necessarily notice a big event like that where you'd have others coming in?
So, again, for any city sanctioned event, they're exempt from needing this permit.
Okay.
This is outside of events that the city has approved.
I guess I was thinking that they were buying something, but it's more a monthly thing than necessarily a yearly permit?
Well, yeah, we just, we said up to, how long was the longest?
Six months.
Yeah, so six months is the longest someone can pay.
Okay.
And that's kind of the season around here.
That's fine.
You know, with our weather. But also, it, again, allows us to monitor. So, if they're not following the rules and, like I said, you know, leaving a mess or whatever, and, you know, you give them three warnings and they don't clean up their act, the permit can't be pulled. And there's a clause in here that if someone really disobeys, but they prepaid, they're not getting a refund. You know, they know the rules and we expect them to follow them, and they're not, nothing strict. It's basic courtesy. It's what I call don't be a jerk rules. Think about other people. So, I think anyone who wants to do business would follow them. It's, you know, similar to our outdoor dining on the sidewalk, you know? We never had a problem with any of those people in those restaurants.
I don't remember. Did we even discuss, like, if there's, say, there's a car show going on and they're using the entire inside of the square, does that outrule their opportunity to park up there? It does, right?
I would say yes, because one of the purposes of this ordinance is so that we can handle these at a staff level and not bring them to council. So, when that car show comes to council to request the use of the square, you're basically overruling anything else that, you know, I mean, there's no handicap parking spaces on the inside, but, you know, you're essentially allowing them to park in those spaces as well.
Okay.
So, you kind of overrule anything that we would permit on the office level.
They should even allow them to charge a fee, don't they? Or, well, keep still charging fees for vendors to be on the square.
Don't know about that.
That's standard practice. So, if a person had this permit and then found out they wanted to be downtown, but there was an event, they would have to work that out with the event organizers.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to point out is that this does require the, or the business owners to provide insurance to the city, which is another one of the huge benefits of having the ordinance and having this in writing, is they are parking in our public right-of-way and they have to show proof of the insurance.
Well, one more thing is, we, this ordinance is actually pretty liberal in terms of how many parking spaces. Because we already let Mike and Nicky's take up eight, we felt like that was the new standard, but that's a lot, that's a pretty large section, but that's what it is, because, you know, we felt like, well, they've kind of set a precedent. Their truck and their trailer took up eight spaces, so in that regard, we're pretty generous in terms of how much space we allow a food truck. Because a food truck can be a truck and there's nothing else, everything they have is in the truck, but it can also be a truck pulling a trailer, and the truck's the generator for everything running in the trailer, and they can't be, well, you couldn't take a trailer off a truck in a parking space anyway. That's against the code, but, so eight spaces is the maximum allowable.
There was no limit to how many we could have up there, was there? I don't remember, same one. And not that I'm expecting, but all of a sudden, if we get 10, right, I guess we just deal with it at that time?
Yeah. There are currently five or six registered food trucks or that have vendor permits. All of them are parking on private property right now.
Okay.
And on a given First Friday, usually there are four. Usually, there's one on each side. I've been kind of keeping an eye on it lately, so you could easily accommodate twice that many for an event like that.
Okay, great. Okay, so...
I'll make the motion to move from the first, second reading.
Okay, moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamm?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
All righty. Under the mayor's report, I'd like to set a work session, date and time. Erin and I spoke about Saturday, October 30th at 9:00. There is an Iowa game that day? Is that right?
I think it's on the road.
Okay. So...
And it'll be in the afternoon, so...
Okay. I was thinking it was earlier, so, you know, got to have our priorities, right? So, anyway, we did talk about that date, October 30th at 9:00 AM, going to, no later than noon, hopefully?
Ish.
Noon-ish. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, okay, all yeses. Okay, so, October 30th it is at 9:00 AM here, and we'll bring some treats. So, all righty. City Attorney Report, John, do you have anything?
I have a couple things.
Oh, by the way, before John gets up there, you know, if there's anything you want on the agenda, please let Erin know, or myself.
For that work session?
Yes, for that work session. I mean, we've got, we've got a couple things that, you know, certainly that we want to bring to the table, but...
Can you share them now?
Well, one of them is to, and I should probably let Erin talk about this, but doing a little bit more of a strategic plan for at least 12 months and possibly even 24 months, really looking at our budget, our capital projections that we have, our capital expenditures, plus looking at the comp plan and drilling down into those a little bit more so it's more meaningful. Really, those were the two things, and we kind of had them as separate things, but also to... He's talked to someone who helps cities do this, so...
It's city council, okay? I'll call you.
We're going to look at that, and he'll explain that. All right, thanks, John.
All righty. Since last meeting, I've had an opportunity on behalf of the city to meet with Dr. Baumann at his home. He has been very helpful with us, has signed an acknowledgement and acceptance of our proposal that was discussed in closed session at the last meeting. At this point, the city engineer and I and people with our street and parks department will be working on flagging and planning the lane into Lambs and Woods. The hope is we'll get that done this fall. City engineer's already aware of some things that are in progress as far as what we need to get this done down there. Dr. Baumann's anxious to have it happen this fall, too. So, I thought I'd report that to you without going into all the detail yet. I'll be bringing you back a resolution like what we've been doing on acquisition of properties and easements on our sewer projects, but this one will just be about this Baumann Lane acquisition. So, that's good news for us as far as resolving how we access our nature preserve down there in Lambs and Woods. We'll be, when we bring this back to you, I'll be bringing back a special warranty deed that will allow the Baumanns to transfer this to the city by a deed that holds a reverter in it. So, if it ceases to be used for public purposes down there, i.e., access to a preserve in a park or parking lot to service those, it could revert to the Baumann family. Now, that's the way it's been at Lambs and Woods with two separate deeds, one of them for over 100 years. So, I don't think there's any likelihood that Lambs and Woods is going to turn into an amusement park or something that's not public and public purposed anytime soon. Maybe an amusement park would be anyway, but, anyway, bad example, John. So, anyway, I want you to be aware of that. It will be bringing you back a couple of different packages. One will be the acceptance of this deal that Dr. Baumann has signed off on. That'll be a resolution, and then later on, we'll accept a deed from them. So, that's, or at least I'll be recommending we accept a deed. So, that's where we are on that. I wanted you to be aware that after our last council meeting, a couple days later, there was a filing in the Federal District Court in Des Moines, and it's a filing that basically said that what the legislature did the last couple weeks of the session to prohibit school districts, also cities and counties related to masking mandates, has been stricken down at present with a temporary restraining order by the Federal District Court for Southern Iowa. Governor Reynolds has decided to appeal that to the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals in St. Louis. The gist of this is that, let me, I've got a note I want to mention. This opinion affects us partly because of our schools. The schools have been allowed to go back to the school boards making their own decisions about whether masking should be required in the return-to-learn programs. But the gist of the opinion is that... But the gist of the opinion is that the way the legislature did it, which is about a 20-page statute, 18 of them are aimed at the school districts. One paragraph at the end of the prohibition part of that 18-page-long reading deals with what the cities are prohibited from doing. Basically, we can't have mask mandates either according to it. And one paragraph is allocated to the counties. They can no longer have mask mandates either. Those weren't addressed as far as the issues generally as far as the 18 pages of prohibitions against school districts. But those one paragraphs have exactly the same nasty stuff in them that the 18 pages had, which included loss of funding for the school districts if they attempted to use masks after that prohibition by the governor. The one paragraph that deals with the city has language in it that impliedly means we could lose our funding if we have mask requirements and the same thing for the county. The problem is they forgot to address a whole bunch of things that they did address partly in the 18 pages of prohibition against the city. So, or against the school districts. And the reason I'm telling you this is one of our senators, Senator Dickey communicated with our librarian whose library board directed her to continue to use the mask rules and distancing rules over at the public library. Now, I've watched the public library relatively closely throughout COVID and we have probably been one of the most generous, lenient library programs in the state as far as making sure that people had access and ability to use our library and materials. I mean, it's like a hamburger joint. You want anything from the library and you're concerned about COVID. They'll bring it out to your car, hand it through your window, wearing a mask, you wear a mask, et cetera. They'll go that far with you. They also, when you're inside, there are places in the library where you can still sit and read and probably be safely socially distanced. But for the most part, they felt that the safest thing to do for kiddie readings and things like that was to mask in the past. So right now, what Senator Dickey told the librarian was, well, I just hate to see you guys get sued for $100,000 for letting somebody wear a mask in there when you're not supposed to be doing that. Well, I had quite a conversation with Senator Dickey after that exchange with the librarian and he said, well, who the heck do these library board people think they are? And I said, well, they've functioned successfully for about 150 years and we've let them pretty much have an operating say in how the library's managed. And we don't think they're doing anything illegal. I then explained to him that I think probably what the legislature did, hitting us with a paragraph versus 18 pages in the House File 487 and the changes that have now been stricken. Probably steps all over city home rule and county home rule with this caveat. The governor said we don't have a health crisis anymore. I think that takes away her ability, similar to martial law, to manage this crisis. When she says it doesn't exist, I think she's lost her management power. And I think the legislature has too, or they need to tell us why in this statute they still have it. So essentially, I'm backing the library and the library board on sticking with their mask policy. I want you to know that. I'm not trying to step on the council's toes, but I don't think the library board will come in here and ask you if they should do that or not. So I want you to be aware, this case is called A R C of Iowa and 20 Other Plaintiffs versus Governor Reynolds, the Iowa Department of Education and 10 school districts. The ruling was signed by the judge the 13th of September. That was our last council meeting day and it's been public since the 15th of September. It's House File 487 that was stricken and essentially the big teeth in that were the loss of fundings if we do things that have to do with the mandate that had been in existence before, but we as a city chose midsummer to lift. What the federal court said was, somebody's not paying attention to the fact that a lot of school districts are having as many COVID cases in the first two weeks of school as they had all last year. And the federal judge didn't mince any words about it. In fact, he wrote 29 pages about it. So where we're at at this point is there will probably be challenges from communities, both under home rule arguments, but also under the main thrust of what the federal judge said was that aside from it not being a well-reasoned statute, ignoring the science and the statistics, that it also, it clashes with several federal laws, mostly in the area of ADA and so forth. And it's aimed at ADA-affected children when it comes to the school districts. But as far as the cities and counties, we still have the same obligation that the school district does as far as making accommodations for anybody that might be affected that's either vulnerable or in some way ADA benefited by the federal law. The federal law preempts the state law. So when I say this to you, why, this is my opinion and I want to back our librarian. It's essentially that I think we're going to see more on this. I don't think there'll be a special legislative session, but I think they'll pick it up after the turn of the year and they're probably going to revisit it and they're going to start hammering things out that should have been in what they passed that got stricken. At that point, I just want to encourage everybody to pay attention to what's going on. The Des Moines Register does a pretty good job of covering Legislative Service Bureau news. But this is one that where you have a clash going on. I don't think the federal court of appeals is going to get this thing decided quickly. It's one of those things that, there may be some other suits in the meantime that also get similar rulings and then they get appealed. I've been to the court of appeals different times in my career and it, usually you get a couple of months to phrase your arguments. You get a couple of months for briefing and they might have their arguments on this next spring. So in the meantime, there could be a lot of back and forth in yet about what the right thing to do is here. So I'm not telling you what the right thing to do is, but I'm telling you what the federal court concerns were. And that case is out there again. It's A R C of Iowa versus Governor Reynolds and the Department of Education and 10 school districts. So anyway, I wanted to report that to you. I want you to know that we've got a stake in the game as far as what our library board's policy is right now. And right now, their position on this wouldn't be illegal until there's something different as far as either a reversal of what the federal district court in Des Moines did as far as the validity of Section 280.31, the way it affects schools, towns and counties. But I'll tell you as soon as that changes, if it does, okay?
Thank you for that update, John. Yeah, any questions for John? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Committee and Board Reports, Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee meeting commenced this evening at 6:00 p.m. Well-attended. We had our two board members present, Doug Flornoy and myself. Our third board member, Katie Anderson, wasn't able to attend this evening. But also we had present, city administrator, a city engineer, chief of police, fire chief, mayor, city clerk and citizen, Maxine. We had two issues, two matters that came before the committee this evening. First was having to do with the Cardinal Drive turnaround paving. And the second had to do with the Jefferson County Kids Daycare funding request. We had a, I thought, I think we had a fairly thorough discussion regarding the first matter and the second as well. The recommendation of the council regarding the Cardinal Drive turnaround paving, the recommendation of the committee, actually, we have no recommendation other than we thought it was best to bring it before the entire council to consider the matter. We have present this evening still our citizen, Maxine, who had the quest before the committee. So Maxine, if you would, take just a couple of minutes and if you could summarize your position and what you're asking of the council to do for you.
Maxine, will you please go to the podium so it can be heard through the microphone? Thank you.
I would request that this be scheduled for, like, the last city council meeting of October to be heard before the city council.
She's requesting that be, that the matter be scheduled to be discussed at the last meeting in October?
Yes.
Why would that be?
Not, not now. I want to make a good presentation.
So the matter discussed, thank you, Maxine. I just want to, I'll think I'll do my best to summarize the matter. The matter discussed this evening was, the citizen, Maxine, was, I believe I understand it, asking the city to pave a certain property that your contention is, is city property near your house. And the city's position at this point is that it's not city property or it's not a responsibility to pave the property. And there was some back and forth as to what the responsibility of the city is, what the expectation of you would be regarding that particular property. And we came to no resolution of the issue.
Yes, and I'm requesting that more detail be heard when it is scheduled for the last city council meeting of October, please.
I also note, thank you, Maxine, I also note that the matter is something that you discussed at some length with both, I believe, the city attorney and the city administrator and other members of the city council over some time. So as far as I understand it, the matter has been discussed in some depth with a number of members of the city council and staff. Is that correct?
No. No.
I think we can resolve this tonight. I don't think it's important dragging it on another month. So I wouldn't have, I would object to postponing this decision.
I'd also ask, thank you, Maxine, I'd ask our city attorney if he could, John, could you summarize as you understand it what the position of the city would be regarding this matter?
It is correct that Maxine has talked with some city officials. I don't know how much with Aaron, but I know both the mayor and I have met with Maxine. And we understand she's not happy about two 12-foot-wide slabs of concrete that abut her property. One of them's actually out in the city right of way. One of them's on her property. They look pretty much like the same cement and they've been there back since the 90s. She's owned the property the last, what, five, 10 years?
Five.
Five years. They, at one point in time, they constituted slab foundation for something. We're not exactly sure what. I think I heard somebody else tonight say there might have been another use for them being a base to something that was there, a mixing spot or something like that. But at this point, that's not something that is of public record. I've searched the courthouse records as far as why there are two 12-foot slabs over there and I really don't have a good explanation for that. But the street itself used to be a gravel road. The street that goes up to, what are there, 10 houses along the street? Cardinal Drive. I'm kind of asking Maxine to be sure that my, my understanding is correct because I, I've been up there a couple of times to see what's there, but I haven't counted houses. I haven't counted her neighbors. I made a comment at the committee earlier tonight that depending on what the council might be inclined to do or not do, you might need to notice the neighbors if it was going to affect anyone else in the neighborhood. What these slabs have been used for over the years is to have enough width in the street that got paved by an assessment petition years ago to permit service trucks, the fire trucks and so forth to turn around on Cardinal Drive. And it is possible to do that, but it's a stretch. You've got to do some backing and some turning and some backing and some turning with what's there. But anyway, Maxine is opposed to the use of her slab as part of the turnaround solution over there. You're not opposed to that?
I only want it repaired. I only want it repaired. All of the concrete is the turnaround. It is in disrepair. It needs to be repaired as part of the city's street system. And it seems to me for this figure of under $3,000 that the city can afford to repair this turnaround, which is being used as a turnaround and which has been damaged in the last 27 years by that use. It should be part of the street system, maintained by the city and snowplowed.
I think essentially that's the argument and those are the points you made during the committee meeting. So I'm not sure there's anything further to be explored in additional meeting. This is something that the council can decide.
We do have something that proposes two or three different kinds of fix for this and the pricing on those was handed out in the committee. I don't, do you have that, Aaron, by chance? Maybe Aaron could explain.
Yeah, I had Darrell Bezgard go look at it and for about $1,000, we could cut out the broken concrete and replace that for about just shy of $3,000, we could replace the whole thing. And then for about 1,800 bucks, we could take the concrete out and then gravel the entire pad also. From the city's standpoint, we're concerned about the precedent set when you redo somebody's, what would be the access from the street to the driveway.
My understanding is that if, if the city were to undertake this project, it'd be something that, we have situations similar to this throughout the city over time. For us, if a city undertakes a project and actually invests the funds to repair a street or part of a street sooner than, sooner than the normal course would, as I understand, to repeat what you're saying, our city administrator set a precedent of having to do something like this on a repeated basis many times over the city's life. Is that right?
This is the only example.
I'm asking the attorney, just asking the attorney to respond, just at this point. Is that correct?
Well, I think your summary is correct, but I'll also say this is an unusual use. Maxine's right. The turnaround slabs are basically there because back when the citizens petitioned to have the street paved, a lot of the lots were owned by the developer over there. He was not necessarily in favor of having it paved with a cul-de-sac because that cut into the size available of saleable lots. Cul-de-sacs just take up more of the area for the paving. So there's no cul-de-sac over there. That would have been one solution for a turnaround that would have impacted all of the lots the same. Instead, these slabs, they work well for the turnaround, but I don't know exactly all vehicles that have driven on them. I just know we had pictures of them when we talked with Maxine about it. And there's grass growing in the cracks. And they have the look of slabs that have been out there for a couple of decades. So that's fair, isn't it?
27 years.
All right, okay.
It's something that's fallen through the cracks. It really need the turnaround itself. All of the concrete of the turnaround needs to be designated part of the city's street and put on your schedules for the future maintenance, but now it needs to be repaired because it's. But now, it needs to be repaired, because it's been 27 years. It's used as the turnaround. I acquiesce that it is the turnaround, and I'm only asking that it be repaired. And $3,000 for repairing all of the sections of concrete in good quality, so that it can withstand the future years of all these trash trucks using it. I'm requesting it be repaired, and it be snowplowed, so that those trash trucks can use it when we have snow, because last year was a bad example of not being able to use the turnaround in the four snowfalls that we had.
How many of these slabs are out there?
Two.
In the cul-de-sac? Two, just two in the entire cul-de-sac? And she's wanting to donate her slab to the city? Is that right, I understand?
Yes, sir. So that...
Internal donation? What are you talking about?
I don't know. Well, that's what I...
It's in the right-of-way.
It's...
No. The cities, the first 12.5 feet is the city's right-of-way. The second 12.5 feet of concrete is deeded to me. I don't know why Ronald Charlton agreed to this, or why legally, maybe it was a good idea. I don't know. But I am saying that the entire concrete should be, the entire turnaround should be maintained by the city, because that's what it's used for, is being a turnaround. I, the property owner, would have a permanent access easement, so I can get to my garage, but the turnaround should be maintained as the turnaround.
And none of those have slabs.
Counsel, any other comments or questions?
Maxine, did you say you do use this access to get to your garage from the north?
I have to pass over the concrete to get to my garage.
Okay.
Which Mr. Morrissey told me the, over the right-of-way, it's understood, it's an automatic thing that I have access, but the, and the second slab, if that belongs to me, I can go over it, but I would be giving it to the city, and I would have a permanent access, just like for the first 12.5 feet. And actually, people, it's a few more inches than 12.5 feet in actual measurement.
So, I think Maxine has given, given a fair description of her situation or ask, and our city attorney has also done the same. As I say, from the committee, we had no, we had no recommendation to the council.
And there isn't anything over at the courthouse that explains how the two 12-foot by, are they 40 or 50 feet?
40.
12 by 40 pieces end up where they are, but it's different than the street paving project that went in and paved the street, and they've just been there. And essentially, they are serving the purpose that she describes. Nobody over in the neighborhood's advocating to switch out to a cul-de-sac. Everybody, I think, is okay with the arrangement, except for the fact she's unhappy about the slabs.
It needs to be repaired. That's all I'm asking. It needs to be repaired.
But you're also asking for it to be snowplowed, and up to this point, the city has not snowplowed it. The homeowner in that house has, I guess, plowed it, I assume, prior to you. That's an assumption.
We've seen it. We, we have viewed it.
Is there any recommendation or any other questions from counsel? Thank you, Maxine. Second point, the second part of our meeting, Jefferson County Kids Daycare funding request. We had Josh Larrabee and a number of members of, I believe, the Jefferson County Kids Incorporated, charitable organization, give a presentation for about 20 to 25 minutes, in which several, several of the key principles spoke about the challenges of childcare in Fairfield, and the need to build a new childcare facility, which they've undertaken. They've come to the city with the, with the ask that the city considers making an investment in that childcare facility. And I think the specific request is that we use a portion of our ARP money, American Rescue Plan funding received from the federal government, to help make this investment. I believe their argument was essentially this is an infrastructure investment, as much as roads would be, or anything else that might improve the economic possibilities for the city. It's our recommendation from the, at the committee meeting, that this be a ask that we consider with some seriousness at the work session that's scheduled for October 30th, along with other particular uses, potential uses for the American Resource, American Rescue Plan funding. So, our recommendation to the council is that, that the, that this organization give their full presentation, the same presentation they gave this evening to us, to the committee, they give the same presentation to the full council, probably at the work session meeting, if not some other time, but we suggest the work session meeting, and that be part of our discussion on that October 30th. Is there anything further you want to add, Doug?
Just that we, if we, if we don't use the Rescue America money, that there are other, we're creatively searching for other options to help them build this daycare center, because it's, it's got to be in the top five things that we need to do in the city to keep growing and have people attracted to the city to come here and work. So, I think, you know, we should be as creative as possible to provide funding for them.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you want a special council meeting to only talk about the Rescue America funds and options, and, you know, have Erin also put together some things, we could certainly do that, but we can, we can do it at the work session as well.
Did you mention the dollar amount that they were...
Yeah, the, the ask is $250,000. That's the ask for the investment of the city. And they gave a very detailed presentation, amazing amount of information, 20 minutes, as to why they need that amount, where they've, where they've secured funding, where else they have secured funding, what their future plans for securing funding. So, it's, I think they would invite questions by the council, they would invite our scrutiny, because they're, they seem to be well-prepared, and I think that if the entire council were to view the report and ask the question that we may have, we'd come away, I think we'd come away impressed. But, but, that's just my opinion. I think it's something that the entire council should consider.
Did you have a question?
Josh, do you have a couple more of those flyers that you gave them, that we could see? I would like to read through it, yeah?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we would, that's a good point. Judy, I think before our, whatever meeting you're going to be speaking at, it'd be nice if you had the materials ahead of time, have a chance to review it, because this is obviously a substantial request. We won't have time to consider it some, some depth.
No, that's all right. Did you have a question?
You answered it.
Okay.
The dollar amount.
Okay, great.
So, I would move that the council consider, our, the council review at our work session, the request of the Jefferson County Kids Incorporated charitable, charitable organization for $250,000 investment from the city, perhaps using ARP funds.
Circle.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move that topic to the work session. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passed. So, if you'll make sure that gets added to the agenda, Erin.
And that concludes our meeting report. Mayor.
Has there been a, was there a motion up or down on action?
There was no, the recommendation, there was no recommendation, and there was no recommendation for action.
No motion, even no motion.
Okay, so, next item under Committee and Board reports was Board of Adjustment, and my understanding, this was an FYI, so that you knew there was a variance request, and it was approved by the Board of Adjustment, and it had to do with a garage being in, put, put in front of a house, and apparently it all made sense to put it there because of the lay of the land. So, I think that's an FYI. Do you have anything to add, Erin or Melanie?
Just by state code, the council has the right to ask the Board of Adjustment to reconsider it if you do not agree with the variance, but there is good justification for this, so, no action if the council doesn't see it.
Okay, great, thanks. We'll go to Administrator and Department reports, Central Park Dining Project update.
Well, if you've been on Central Park in the last 10 days, you've seen some activity. City crews prepped the area a week and a half ago. I will say, for anybody who is concerned about the spirea bushes, all 10 have been transplanted. Three went around the gazebo, five went into downtown nodes, and two went to the north entryway sign. I moved them all myself, so I know they're, they're doing well. And then, starting last Monday, our contractor came in and poured the slabs and put in the table bases, and the pavers are scheduled to arrive tomorrow. I'm taking Thursday off of work, and Melanie and Pam and her two guys are gonna try to get all the pavers installed Thursday. And then, if we can get the tables put together before first Friday, October 1st, that would be a goal, but I'm not promising anything, because I know weather and we, we're not paver, paver installation experts, we don't know how long it's gonna take. Pam's plan for this area is, in spring, she's gonna kind of till up that area underneath the pine trees, so all those wooden picnic tables will leave, and she's gonna try to get grass to grow under those pine trees. So, this area will be a little bit, not quite back to its former glory until spring next year, but crews will kind of fill in the gaps around the slabs, and then we'll take the, the snow fencing. But I was really impressed with the city crews. They hit a few snags that had nothing to do with this project. There were some light posts that haven't been working since the downtown lights were installed last year, and Parks Department thought that the contractor accidentally cut the lines, and that's exactly what they found when they dug those electrical conduits that were feeding these, these lights had been cut. So, it's one of those things, kind of like the gentleman who came and complained about the cost of his, his water. You don't know what you're gonna find when you start digging, and so, they found some stuff that, again, had nothing to do with this project, but needed fixing anyway. So, hopefully, by the time we have a next meeting, this will be a completed project. And currently, the four tables that are there, four, four tables sit, seat about six people, so about 24 people. We'll have eight tables that sit four people each, that's 32, two of which are wheelchair-accessible. So, I think this will be a real upgrade to our downtown seating.
And you think it, there's no issues for accommodating Christmas lights at this time, no changes to our normal design? You think that's still...
TBD, to be determined, yeah. I mean, it's the same thing with the flags, you know? That's, there may be some change to exactly how some of the historic stringing of the lights and placing the flags could be somewhat altered, but still, the spirit of it and the, the overall look will, will still be there.
Great. Great. Erin, anything?
Was it two weeks ago we went to the Iowa League of Cities?
About.
About. Just wanted to give an update on that. That was, again, a very well-attended and a very good conference for a number of council members and city staff. Couple of the, one of the highlights was a good discussion on strategic planning on, and how to work with hot topics and present them a little bit differently to garner more support. That strategic planning conversation is probably, is gonna be part of our work session to move the city forward in conjunction with our capital improvement plan, along with, in conjunction with our comprehensive plan. So, I, I think it's a really important thing that the city look at, and we have a discussion about and move forward with on that. All in all, I think, again, it's a very worthwhile conference for any council members that can take the time off and go. There's a lot of governmental ins and outs that are discussed in the different classes that you can attend that will help us as a city in general to become better council members, better city staff, better mayor. Not that she needs to be better, I'm just using that as an example.
Always room for improvement.
But otherwise, I, I thought it was a fantastic, fantastic event for all of us to attend for the dollars that we spent to go to it.
I would echo that. If I, this is my second conference, if you go, I go there, if I get just, if I get two or three ideas that stand out, that I jot down, then I feel it's a success when I've gone to seminars. And so, when I come back, I've got more than that, but I've got definitely two or three strong, clear ideas that we can use right away, right away, out of work session. So, I think it's very, very worthwhile.
Great. Melanie?
All right, the exciting news is that Fourth Street is finally open. Opened up Friday, they did close it down for most of today in order to do the intersections, but the asphalt work is done. There is still some ADA curb ramps to do and cleanup, and parking spot marking. The parking spots are gonna be moved around a little bit, but I actually believe that there's gonna be a net gain of one parking space on, in that couple block area. So, that's, so glad to be over that hurdle. I'm glad that it's open, and Chief Thomas will spend some extra time out, out on that street now that it's very smooth. On 32nd, I did post something on Facebook today, that they will start some work out there tomorrow. They'll be milling the headers or the transitions between the concrete and the asphalt, and then Wednesday and Thursday, they'll be placing the asphalt. So, there will be one lane open during this, but there will be, there'll be delays for people traveling in that area. The post office alley is also almost over the hump, that they poured the last section of the alley right by the post office, so that area will be partially back, back to normal here soon. They still have the west section of the alley to do, but the drop box should be back to its old spot very shortly. As far as future projects, the USDA, or the application was submitted for the USDA loan and grant for step three. So, McClures and Rebecca are answering any of USDA's questions at this time. And then, the task force, although we had the council's action at the last meeting, we don't have the next meeting scheduled for the Fire Station Task Force. Klingner is working on fine-tuning a floor plan that the task force will review one more time, with the idea that then that floor plan would be the public document that we use for grant application, if we go to referendum, that that would be the floor plan that's out to the public. So, the task force will work on, on finishing that up and bringing it to council before we start on those different funding opportunities. So, unless there are any questions, that is all I wanted to touch base on. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Moved by Toohill.
Second.
Second by Ham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned.